Sometimes, something really serious happens and our police officers can get called in the middle of the night to an incredibly intense situation. Communicating that we're safe, but there's also public safety needs is a strange hard balance, right?
Okay.
And I think, you know, like not assisted by the Westland tidings, that's all the comical calls that we get. But not a lot of focus on the calls where someone's got a knife and asserting themselves or a family member, you know? So, I don't know, there's even a broader category of like public awareness of what we do to make the community as livable as it is.
Okay.
So, maybe that's bigger one than public safety, but I always think of it in the context of public safety. I don't know, chief may have.
Yeah, I would say that, I'm sorry. I think, well, I think it's a strength and a problem in that the city is very responsive to every inquiry into the city. We try and get back to everybody, but that can also be a problem for us when we are spending a lot of time responding to the same person with the same issue 100 times.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. So, it can be, again, it kind of ties into these high expectations. It's really time consuming to meet those and when you're already running very lean. And then also, I wanted to capture this one that John mentioned, just creating awareness of what it takes to make Westlin as livable as it is with the community, that that's a challenge.
From a data standpoint, I think police response times have gone up a little bit, which is not, because it's just concerning and something that the public, I'm sure, would be concerned about, not a huge increase, but just, we need to address that at some point.
Okay. Response times are up.
And another thing, just that, my final comment is on the perception about taxes in our city, where, you know, people, their taxes are high, but then threading the needle and communicating that, hey, your city portion is very low compared to other cities and because of the frozen tax rate creates some, just communication challenges about the needs of the city. And then the perception that we're a prosperous community, but the city government itself is, as Mary said in the past, low-key broke.
Low-key broke, yeah. And the general lack of knowledge of what different government does what different thing. You know, does the city do dog control? Does the city do paramedic? Does the city do, you know, pick your thing? I think you would do a poll of the community and folks would be confused. So, defining what we do and having people understand those challenges. I think if we're going to ask the community for support on a thing, they have to have a clear understanding of what it is we do and what we don't do.
Okay, so a clear understanding of what's included in city services.
Yeah.
Doug, you had? I think we also battle in each department, a kind of a new transient job culture and not transient in the means of homelessness, but I think more than ever, employees are willing to change jobs more frequently, look for other opportunities. You know, the days of, you know, sticking with one police department for an entire 25, 30-year career are just kind of gone.
Yeah.
So, it's always a challenge to continue to offer as much as you can to keep the loyalty of the employees, to keep them staying here.
Yeah, this is a common theme that we hear in all government agencies of like the average tenure is kind of more like five years, maybe, sometimes three to five years. And so, just retention, employee recruitment and retention is expensive. It's a cost burden.
And that's tied to, because the departments and the staffs are so small, there's not always a promotional pathway for people. So, if they want to be promoted, they have to go somewhere else.
I also think that there's a challenge with communicating to a public who feels all their needs are being met. So, we live in a space where people are very happy with what they have and so how do you, so they're not paying attention. So, in the communication world, we're spending a lot of time trying to figure out how we get to all our constituents. So, obviously, there's social media, but some people don't do social media. So, how do we engage our community by letting them know when they're feeling like, well, I don't really need to worry about too much because this is why I live here? And they're not necessarily paying attention to all the things, both from an opportunity standpoint and from an informational standpoint of what happens in our city.
Okay. Let's also capture that piece about homelessness.
That's a really good point that Doug is making, that's something that I noticed starting working in the school district, which is where I came from, is that there's, almost because of the perception of wealth in the community, if you're, the people who aren't wealthy are invisible and in fact, don't exist, somewhat because in the needs basis. So, when I went out as a member of the Transportation Advisory Board to Metro to seek funding for projects that we needed attention to help our corridor of, in the communication, or in the transportation chain, we were told, well, we're not a high-needs area. But there, I know there are people of high needs who suffer and they are not counted because of the perception of wealth in the community, but we are actually a 25% rent burdened, over 25% rent burdened community, which I'm not even sure if people realize that, not people in this room, but the general community. And the regional partners need to know about that, too.
Other problems or challenges?
I would just add a potential budget deficit, just to make sure that's on the list.
Ignore that one, okay?
We, we hear, just generally, we as government hear that we need to look at cutting the fat or trimming our budget before we request more money. Well, in this case, we don't have any of that to do.
Okay.
We're already at the very bottom. We're running lean, so we don't have the ability to go without anymore than we already are.
Without compromising quality of the current service levels?
Badly.
I wanted to add on to the funding where it says high expectations. I think what's maybe the mis there that's being said is that we don't have enough funding to support, to keep our parks, public roads, our infrastructure safe, to maintain those assets we've already paid for, including our facilities, long-term, before we even look at things to expand to.
Okay, so not enough money to keep the businesses being able to maintain.
Correct.
Others? Did we get the majority of it? I know, I know, it's depressing. It is depressing. All right, let's talk about, let's shift up to opportunities, less depressing. What color do we want to do for that? Green feels good. Green for go. Okay.
Sarah, can you clarify for us the difference between strengths and opportunities?
So, this is where, when we think about, and again, I see, I see problems can also be shifted into opportunities, so thinking about, this is, so a lot of the strengths that you mentioned up here, so I'll talk about problems again in a second, but a lot of the strengths you mentioned up here are around lots of like high levels of public trust, lots of community events, great engagement. So, that could translate into an opportunity around how we do engagement of like, this is, this might be a good climate for making an ask on the ballot. So, I think you could highlight that. If you were to translate a problem into an opportunity, so this one that Megan just mentioned of like, we don't have enough funds to maintain our assets. So, what would be maybe the initiative that you might propose as an opportunity, potentially a funding package that shores up, or is going to provide some sort of sustainable revenue source to maintain the assets that you have? Or it could be, is there, is there another initiative or something that, kind of thinking back to your warm-up exercise, something that's going to generate some revenue, like thinking about how to expand your tax base, things like that? Does that make sense? So, that's how, that's how you start to think about these things and how, how do we translate that into an opportunity? Anybody want to get us started on that front? Haven't, I know you guys have ideas. I can get to the outreach notes if you need inspiration, but I know there's ideas out there.
Well, one opportunity is that we as a city and city council have been pretty judicious with our asks of the community for funding. We really haven't, I was thinking back to this recently and responding to a constituent, we've only put two bond measures on the ballot and neither of them resulted in tax increases. So, they're at the least, at least since, I think since 2018, we haven't done any sort of requests from the community. So, I think that's an opportunity and it's kind of strength and opportunity, like just being able to say that we're not a city that always goes out to ask the community for things. We're very judicious with those sorts of requests.
I think one of the, one of the themes there is we have a great track record of fiscal responsibility, I think is what you're saying. There's a great story to tell about living within our limits, which comes from both the strength and the problem part.
Yeah, I refer to this as cap space, like in the NBA team sense. We haven't used up, first of all, the cap within measures five and 50, but also, we just, we haven't asked for a lot of things, so we don't have a lot of municipal debt behind us.
Okay.
We have some credibility in saying, hey, we need more money.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, the opportunity is that the climate could be a good one at this point in time to make an ask of the voters, to put something on the ballot. Okay? Other opportunities?
Kind of going on to a more tangible realm, we have an amazing natural resource, which is the Willamette Falls and, and also partners who are interested in working with the city and who are attracting millions, tens of millions of dollars as we speak. And the South Portland metro area does not have a major conference space slash performing arts space, think Reeser and Beaverton, something along that level. And we could potentially seek to place something, a hotel or something very significant near the falls, that would be an amazing, what am I trying to say?
Sorry.
Tourist attraction and attract tourism and business to the area.
Okay, so Willamette Falls is an opportunity for tourism?
What I'm thinking is about communication. I can never quite figure out if Westlin is little or big. It depends what I'm doing. Sometimes it feels little and sometimes it feels big. But looking at the strengths, I do think it's manageable to reach our community with communication. I don't think we figured out how to reach every single family and household, we'll never do that, but I think between our elected officials and our involved community members and our staff, we can find ways to communicate with a huge share of our community if we really invested in it and focused on it. So, I think it's manageable to talk to this community and to explain whatever it is that we decide to do with Danielle's help. Danielle, is Westlin big or small for communication? Yeah, that's what I think, too.
Okay, so opportunity here is that we can reach our community, we work together.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not Portland, we're not Gresham, we're not even Beaverton, right? We're a quarter the size of Beaverton, so we can reach out and be successful in talking to the community.
Okay, and telling that story, telling this story. Yeah, okay. What, what are some of the other opportunities when we think about projects on the horizon? So, we just heard Willamette Falls.
I think our renewal funding is an opportunity. We haven't really tapped into that. We have one district set up, we're talking about setting up a second one on Highway 43, but that's a, something that our city has never had before and we're just starting to see some revenues collected. And that's a way that doesn't increase taxes, just leverages existing resources. And then that's kind of tied into potential future development around the Falls area and the vision plans that we're just about to adopt.
To allow you to make some infrastructure investments or property acquisition in those specific areas in those districts. Okay, so it's kind of more of a long-term, long-term opportunity, but certainly an opportunity. What other opportunities?
Sorry to interrupt, but I can't hear you because your microphone's facing away from your face.
Okay, I'll try to hold it closer. Thanks.
All right.
That's okay. All right, hard to, hard to juggle markers, microphones and, I know, I know, it's impressive. You should have seen yesterday, I could do a lot more, but I didn't have to hold a microphone, so. All right, so we were talking about urban renewal, got one district, there's an opportunity for another, just for anybody listening, these help to raise, raise money over long periods of time to make those investments in infrastructure or in property acquisition in those particular areas. Okay, what are, what are maybe some of the shorter-term opportunities or initiatives?
We have, I'm continuously impressed with how intelligent and willing to learn and understand our residents are. They're willing to process new information and try to wrap their heads around what we're doing. So, we have that ability to actually talk to them and not immediately just face a wall of enraged opposition.
Okay. What about? All right, go ahead.
But they've also expressed to us unprompted that they have a willingness to pay a little bit more if they get a little bit more.
Okay.
I think we have an opportunity here through this process to take some stuff off of our plate, to become more laser-focused on, I don't want to say the realities, but we're facing a pretty significant budget crisis in a couple of years, and I see a lot of expansion ideas on the board, which is fantastic. I think they're going to bring stuff to the city, but we can't do everything, right? Somebody used the word dilute earlier. The more we dilute this problem, this budget, the least effective it becomes. So, the opportunity here is to, through some very tough decisions, whittle down what's going to be in the three- to five-year plan and what needs to be pushed off to the 10, 15-year plan.
Any thoughts on what, have you guys had any conversation about what types of things could shift and how you deliver services, anything that, anything that would move off the plate? But service reduction is one opportunity. Okay?
I think we also have a few opportunities of different funding mechanisms that we can use. We've identified a few and, you know, such as like a local option levy, a public safety type fee, maybe potentially a geo-bond.
Yeah, we can add grants to that or even partnerships, looking at even other agencies who we can partner with, looking to do.
Okay, grants. What are some of the priorities that you're funding with these things? So, these are all options, but I don't, I don't mean to point out the obvious, but you did talk about like the staffing is very lean. Is that something that we're prioritizing as we want to maintain service levels? Or is it land acquisition? Or I'm trying to think through some of the things that you talked about in your interviews with me that you might want to consider as opportunities. So, different funding tools, but are we trying to, is the opportunity to increase the staffing level?
I think that's one of the goals, especially in the, in the departments where we're very lean and at risk of burnout. So, increase staffing in key departments. And there's also some, we've talked about some projects as well.
Yeah, let's hear about some of the projects.
In the, in the Parks Arena, we've talked about our Parker Road property that we own.
Parker Road?
Yeah, we already own this piece of land there and it's where Music in the Park takes place and maybe we could do like a community process to explore like a food cart pod and a better space for Music in the Park. Then we also have the opportunity on a, a place called Oppenlander. We've been talking with a developer and community about that. We just did a survey about that.
Did I spell that right?
I think so, yeah.
For the win. Okay. All right, we got, so as far as projects or initiatives that you would think about funding, Willamette Falls, urban renewal, increasing staffing levels, Parker Road property, Oppenlander, what else?
It was suggested last night by the, our consultants on our waterfront vision process that we do some kind of initial, it's not even phase one, it's kind of pre-phase one, community amenity to start helping the community come into a space that no one has even thought about being a community space.
So, community amenity on the waterfront?
Yes, that's the shortest way to put that.
What other things do we, are we looking to fund? What other things do you want to consider in this list of potential priorities?
I was wanting to add that it could be seen as a problem or threat, but I think because we're meeting, it's an opportunity to look at an evaluation of our facilities and our parks for our long-term deferred maintenance plans, so we can maintain those assets long-term. I know Public Works has a robust planning document, but we do not. And so, I think it really will help shine a light on our strengths, our problems and our potential threats in the future by having that.
How can we summarize this? Facilities and park asset management?
Yep, deferred, deferred asset management, long-term, long-range planning.
And that's all about taking care of the things you have.
Right, and being able to know how to budget it 10, 20 years down the road.
There's two huge property owners in the city of Westlin that I think have key parcels of land. ODOT is one of them.
And is this about land acquisition?
PGE is the other one, yeah.
ODOT and PGE are the owners?
Yep.
I've got one with our, we're in design for a new operations building, and so that would be a funding opportunity that we're, we're trying to value engineer it, but we're still coming up short, so that would be a great opportunity for additional funding needs. Also, kind of along the, I think the public safety fee would be for new, filling in some sidewalk gaps, having a fee for that, utilities, as we mentioned earlier, and then streets.
Okay, so utilities, sidewalks and streets, are those, like, can I put those in one thing or should I list them separately?
They would come most likely from different pots of money, but I think for this exercise, if you put them together, it would be fine.
Basically, you're starting with one and then bike and pet safety.
Okay, so utilities, bike and pet safety. Can we see that? Okay.
On that, like I said, I have two things. With the operations center, we have the opportunity to perhaps look at other ways of funding that and taking some of the pressure off the general fund. I would call that an opportunity. But also separately, we're in a position where many of the things we can consider right now would actually, in my opinion, increase property values, which increases revenue ultimately, but it makes for a very compelling case to voters that we will actually be sort of having a return on investment for supporting these things. And I think that's a unique position to be in.
I want to put one more thing somewhere. I'm not sure where it is. It might be an opportunity. Many of these things we're looking at have been done recently even by our peer cities. So, you know, there's other cities that have built new operations centers, there's other cities working on or building recreation centers, there's other cities that have created urban renewal districts. So, we're, we're talking about things that are known how to be done and that when we talk to the public, we can say, I mean, everyone, everyone in Westlin is aware of Lake Oswego's Rec Center, right? And so, they know that it's a thing that cities and communities do. So, there's, there's not much that we're talking about that people are going to be like, what the heck would a city do that for? Which I think is an opportunity.
Yeah, I think during our next phase of the discussion, we should talk about a couple of those examples and how those things have been funded to kind of help give a little more context to some of these opportunities. I do want to honor that we said we would take a break at 10 o'clock. And so, I want you guys to go ahead and take 10 minutes, but maybe we'll, when you come back to your seats, I'll tell you when to come back, but I just, maybe while milling about and moving around, maybe you'll feel inspired and some, some things start firing and you might have some ideas, because I want you to come back and think about, I'm going to have you use your post-it notes and think about what are some threats, list a couple of threats out that we might want to put up there just for consideration or things we might need to manage. And then also just reflect on, is there anything missing as you glance at this, at the opportunities and the problems and the strengths and the things that we've identified thus far? Anything else that we need to add to these lists before we continue on our discussion?
To, maybe I'll ask the same prompt, if people are thinking about this, clarifying the difference between a problem and a threat.
Yes, so I have it listed here that threats are external risk or pressures that could undermine your success. So, sometimes it's like if we don't talk about them and acknowledge them and, and consider in our planning, they can become problems. And, and so, that's why it's important to at least put it out there. All right, let's take 10 minutes and, and then I will call you guys back, so it's 10 o'clock. The clock is a little fast, so we'll come back at 10:10 and have you take a few minutes to reflect and let me know what we're going to add. Do I? Yep, it happened. Thank you. Help me out. I have a moment to spend parking, talking to my kids.
Yeah, like that, that's fun. Opinion to that, that I have been planning on doing next year. Yes. I was thinking every month or every whatever period, more sitting editor video type stuff. The date. I'm planning to spend time with each of the groups, which is like, what do you do? It's like, and all the things that you don't know, the visual, the press camps, or rolling at night, or something like that, like, you know, what is the super villain? Butter blackberry. So I'm really, I'm recognizing the public. She's a patron, she has a bad sliver. Yeah, I like, I like the mentions in the world. Yeah. Yeah. We wouldn't know. You put your head in. Oh, they're in fact, involved that talent.
It could just be a picture. This is not being funny, Tal. Yeah. Yeah.
A lot of lines that we can read.
Don't need to be a baller. So where are you? Have a lending library and dog. I'm suddenly not a law. Yeah. Right. We could have office. I really really like that. Maturity. I didn't like the number, but it's still close there. When I stay on certain parts of the. Haven't seen that. Stay uninformed. Give that a go a couple of times. Yeah, you want to go in there? I've been looking forward to that new library. Yeah, it's going to be great. I got, you got a great library. I think it's going to be crazy. Finally. Yeah. Here. This is kids' work in my life. So. Where are we going? I was hoping, I mean, that's all. This old lab, we're doing, you know, it's off the works. Just to have some guys. Say we left that before. It's basic. So are we? So we can either group that or not. Also, be held there. Given that situation, about three months, maybe within that. They clearly give back to that. It's more of a new place. Yeah. So here, again? Yeah. That's one. Saber is fun. Here. Yeah. Yes.
I have to show you, Mary. I made.
You think so, Paul, Ken? I love that. Thought by paper. Hands, appreciate it. Yeah, sure. Too many problems, not enough money out there.
Okay, we're ready. Sorry, sorry to make you work so hard.
I got class at one, so we got.
Yeah, we got it. Okay. Yes. Right here. Mic check, can you hear me okay? Not at all. I do, I have a new mic.
Go with the lapel.
Closer?
Yeah.
How about now? A little bit? He says that no. Go back to the other one.
It's coming through on the YouTube stream. Like the captions are showing up.
The captions are showing?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Testing, testing.
The feed can. The feed can hear it, it's showing up.
We tried.
I used to, I used to work at a karaoke bar, so I'm very, this is very familiar. I can hold trays of drinks and a karaoke microphone all at the same time. All right, we're not going to do that right now. We are going to get back to financial priorities and, and talking about those. Okay, so before the break, I asked, I told you all that I was going to give you minutes to just reflect on using your post-its. First, identifying any threats that we might want to manage or consider. So external risks, pressures that could undermine success. Like one example, just to kind of get you thinking down this path, maybe some of the other taxing jurisdictions are all going out for bond measures. There's a, a risk of that happening and that can, that could undermine success for something local. So not that those things aren't local, but for a city tax measure. So thinking about what sort of risk, we talked a lot about our strength being public trust or, you know, communication. So any, any risks or things that could undermine success in pursuing these opportunities? What are some, what are some things we want to at least be mindful of as, as we're thinking about this? So take a few minutes, use your post-it notes, one, one risk per, per post-it so that we can, or one threat per post-it so that we can get those up on the board. And then in addition to that, if, as you've thought about our discussion thus far, if there's anything missing from these other areas that we should add, you can also put those on a post-it as well. And I can, I can get them up on the board before we keep on in our conversation. So take a few minutes. Yeah. Thank you. Yep, you should have markers in front of you.
Couple of minutes and then we're walking up and sticking them on.
Couple of minutes and then, yep, come on, carefully come on down. Don't trip on anybody's things or any cords and get them up on the board here. Yes, that is not your imagination, the markers are scented. But you said that was our impromptu COVID test back in the day. Do you have your sense of smell? No? Okay, maybe you should wear a mask. My bad jokes will be here all day. All right, once you have your threats outlined, again, just come on down and let's get them up on the board. Yep, go ahead, stick them, be the, be the first one, get us started. All right, perfect. Perfect, always a concern. What's happening?
Some other people stole mine, so I couldn't do them.
Watch your step, watch your step. This is a test over here, we're testing here, it's an agility course. All right. All right, any other threats?
Got it? Here, I will help.
Yeah, we're really testing my dexterity today.
I could just stand here and be extra.
Good, we might need that. Okay, did I get everybody's threats up here? Oh, okay. Can I start putting these, are these two? Those are something else? False start, okay, great. All right, any others? Did I get them all? Okay, one more, come on down. Yes, no, okay, I'm going to start, I'm going to start reviewing these with you so you can think about these. All right, so threats that we have, cyber, cybersecurity, that's a threat. What happens in the event of a cybersecurity attack? Like take down the city's finances, systems? Yes, all of the above?
All the above.
All of the above, okay. Continued increase in costs to improve infrastructure, cost of materials, time, things are not going down, okay? The economy, what's happening? I don't know, do you? Okay. Two, oh, being too broad with our objectives and not focused enough. Yes, why is that a risk? Or why is that a threat?
Much more difficult to get the message out, to get the voters behind.
Yeah, how are we making our compelling shark tank pitch if, if we're diluting it, diluting our, our ask? Okay, next, a vocal minority pushing the narrative in the wrong direction. Yes, that would be a threat. The failure of a measure, just placency. Compete priorities, that kind of goes with this too broad. Oh, got it, okay. Uninformed but vocal community members, all right? Federal funding and state funding, dot, 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 what's happening there? Yeah, what's that?
It's a minus sign.
Oh, a minus sign, oh, decreasing, or, or dot, 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 too. Could be, it could be both, but yes, what is, what's happening? The, the levels of funding are not. are not increasing in that direction either. Current anti-government narrative, waste, fraud and abuse. Obfuscation, I don't know that I can say that word. Obfuscation, thank you. Digital platforms stoke outrage and misinformation by design, AI, loss of traditional media and trust. Yeah, so that's, that's also a threat. Many residents already can't afford the cost of living. Yes. Other threats, seismic, fire, COVID-2. Economic upheaval, we already kind of touched on that one. Communication issues, so comments not aware of the portion of taxes are, are low that go to the city and its impact on staffing levels. Yeah, so there's just a, a lack of awareness about that. Other governments floating tax measures or raising fees. Yes, thank you for writing that one down. Voters turn down the water funding. When was that? Recent? How recent?
Couple of years ago.
Three years ago? Okay. And then a recession or economic decline. Wage, wage stagnation or inflation and just overall money, money's down. Money is down. And then risk of failure with the community. So making sure there's support for priorities and not going too big. Okay. Any others or any of these that you want to elaborate on? Or have questions about? Yeah, these are all good threats to be aware of, which I think, you know, one of these, again, this one, like competing priorities, being too broad. Thinking about all of these threats, like having a really focused ask, I think is going to be really important. Which brings me back up to this section of our chart here of making sure, so when we think, I want, where I'm going with this is I, I think we're, we're gonna get into the communication strategy last. And so I think we have a lot in here about community trust and how we engage and opportunities for engagement are implicit in some of the things you've talked about. But where I want to focus our discussion right now are on the funding tools and then the things we're funding. And I want to make sure that we at least have all the big buckets up here represented. And so I thought we could highlight that by circling them in different colors. So first, thinking about the things we're funding. Parker Road property, that's a specific thing that we would be funding. Yes? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. And Oppenlander? Yes?
Yes.
The phase one of the community amenity on the waterfront? Facilities and parks, the deferred asset management and long-term planning? Land acquisition? Yes? A new operations building? Utilities? That's.
That was about like investing in drinking water cap, sorry.
Before I get, that was about investing in drinking water lines, sewer lines, you know, basic, basic infrastructure. Back to that challenge that Eric mentioned about a rate cap.
Okay. So investing in water sewers. So then this is a thing that we would be funding. Bike and pedestrian safety? And then there was another one over here. Well, Lamont Falls? Yes? Did I miss any?
Increase staffing.
There should be stabilized staff funding.
Oh, yeah.
Increase staffing levels.
Increase staffing levels.
I think the, whether we want to think about it as two things or one thing, but stabilize is incredibly important to us. So.
Do we have that up here?
The ability to continue doing the things we're doing.
Protect against staffing cuts.
Yep. Yep. So it might, it might not actually have made that side of the list.
Okay, so we need to add that one then. So maintain current service levels. Sasha, do we have some dots in our bag of trips over there? Thanks, Sasha. All right.
We probably have dots.
We have dots. We don't get to use them. We haven't used them in a minute. So I think it's, I don't know where the suitcase. Like a Mary Poppins bag. Anybody ever seen Mary Poppins? Like you just don't know what sort of things are gonna pop out of there. It's wild. Okay. What I think I, what I think would be a good, a good start to our conversation is to have you guys go ahead and put some, give you three dots. Three dots each. Do you want staff to participate in this too or just council? I can use different color dots for staff and council. You guys all want to play?
Yes.
Okay, let's all play. Two colors of dots. Everybody's going to receive three. Sasha will decide what color staff gets and what color council will get. And based on the things I circled, this is a very specific instruction, okay? Based on the things I circled, you get to place your dots. You can place all three dots on one thing. But what would be your, your top three things that you would like to see funded? And with this instruction, you need to not, don't try to be tricky and like, and like half dot it between these two, okay? Don't make me guess. Like get it, get it close to the thing. And if, and if we're having trouble, like as these ones get closer down here, I can, I can draw some lines to make sure it's, I want to know where your dots are being assigned to, okay? So let's see, staff use the blue dots. Council use the green dots. And you get three. You get three. This is an honor. Sasha gave you a whole sheet. Oh, let's even, let's do this. Let's go a step further. Take a marker and put your initials on your dots. Yeah. Ooh, accountability, accountability mechanism here. All right, so you get to pick? You can. Yes. You can. No, no, there's no negotiation. You cannot cut your dots in half. There's no half dotting. Yeah.
Get that out of the way.
Be clear. Yeah. There's also no selling, no selling of dots to your friends or neighbors. Yeah. Yes, you can. I said they could.
Wait, did Sarah say we should do that?
What's that?
Yes.
Oh, you did. We're supposed to do that.
I guess you're the mayor, so you can.
That's why I have your initials on there, so now I can follow up questions. Kind of in between that Parker Road, Oppenlander.
Can't fire.
I can't do that, but I can ask clarifying questions.
It's a selfie. I know what it is. I've taken them before myself.
Oh, he's holding his dots too.
I'm going them now. I was just waiting for the line to die, you know?
Are you breaking any ties? Is that weird?
Yeah, I was just waiting for the line to die down.
Put up there for like a, because we're looking at that as a funding tool. Does that make sense? We will get, you get, I know, I don't want you to waste a dot. We are gonna get conversations about, about that, but. There's always the dot. We have the people who wait last. They want to see. Yeah. How to best leverage their dots.
I want to put one of my dots on something, but I didn't. I felt like Hulu was watching me as I put them up, so I was like snapping.
Okay, do we have everybody's dots up? All right, what, what do we have here towards the top? So increase in maintained staffing levels and service levels are definitely front runners. And then we have some others, this land acquisition. And investing in water and sewer. The utilities and kind of basic infrastructure. This has, let's count. One, two, three, four, five. Then three. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, this one? Okay. Okay. 1.5. Said you couldn't do that, but you're right. I can't fire you, so. Okay, all right. And then we've got one here. Thoughts on this? Let's reflect what. How many? Two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 13. So primary priority is, and not, not that you have to pick one, this is about identifying what the priorities are and then thinking about how to sequence things. But this is, those would be the top. Would, if we take, so that's obviously the top priority. Any like reflections or conversation that you want to have advocating for any of these particular priorities over on this side?
I mean, the, the land acquisition one is also intended to be sort of a solution.
Oh, yeah.
That's a good point.
The, the land acquisition one, that, that's intended to also be a solution.
For a return, yeah, return on investment.
So that wasn't just a joke in the beginning there with that.
Yeah.
That warm-up activity. I really think that's a viable strategy.
Okay.
So that, that fits in there well. But I also think that it's not that everyone doesn't support facilities, parks and all of that. It's that we view them as part of the other to maintain current service levels and staffing levels, I think.
And of course, increased staffing levels implies maintained staffing levels.
Yeah.
I think they fit into that. And so it was difficult to spend an extra dot on that one.
Yeah. Staff, any concerns about how this shook out? On this side, again, thinking, thinking about how you might sequence things? Priorities perspective.
I think it's interesting because when you see the green, you're talking about council. Council's thinking of the future and what our needs are going forward. Staff have that in mind, but aren't their daily activities or what are we doing today and how are we gonna take care of tomorrow? So I think it's really reflective of the roles that we have that we see the votes like that. Which are all, all good. I mean, it's a good thing and not saying that there's anything negative.
Yeah, and if you look at the council dots down here, it's, there's definitely more of a trend towards, we want to, we're not so much in favor of increasing staffing levels, but we definitely want to maintain current service levels. Yeah, and the other green dots are definitely more forward-thinking.
I think also to what Kevin said is the land acquisition, we've got a sub-note there of ODOT and PGE landowners. But land acquisition could be anywhere in the city, so that could include Oppenlander as land acquisition.
It could be connected to priorities.
It's also connected to her renewal, that land acquisition.
Okay. Well, this is just kind of a start to think about priorities. We don't have to segment these out. I do, this one I think is interesting, kind of this, we want to maintain current service levels, but utilities investing in basic infrastructure. That seems important because that, well, because it gets to, I guess it gets to service levels. If you don't make those investments, how long can you defer? Until you start to see like your, you know, like pavement condition index starting to decrease because you don't have the funds to maintain your streets at the current services. So I don't know if there's anything that staff wants to highlight about that particular.
I was gonna say something very similar to that. And that's why I went with that versus like land acquisition, which I also think is really important. But I'm also like, if we can't maintain what we currently have, then really should we be getting more stuff that we then also have to maintain and spend money on? So that's why I went with that instead. And I think that if we don't have the basic services like water and sewer, that is gonna be a problem. A big problem.
I also though, although that is true, land acquisition doesn't always need to be thought of as a sole ownership. It could be a partnership, a public-private partnership where the city is the owner of record, but it's a partnership where the upkeep or development of the property is not actually on the city.
And could also be used as leverage. So the city owns a property and then can put some restrictions or limitations on how that's developed and then sell it to a developer. So then the city doesn't own it anymore, but we get the revenue from that and we get built an amenity that we want.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I think that looking at the way these are organized and stated, it's very different from the way we all know them and understand them. And it kind of splits up ideas or combines them in ways that, that are different than the way we all consider them. So.
How so? Can you?
I think many of us view like maintaining current service levels and then increasing staffing levels as kind of a similar bucket, same as investing in utilities. Like we clearly support all of these to, to an extent. And I don't think any of them are mutually exclusive in any way. But they could probably be reorganized in a way that clearly combines them all more in, in line with how we all think of them.
Okay. Would others agree with that?
Yeah, I think there's sort of a project orientation on the right and then an infrastructure orientation on the left or supply or resource orientation.
When we're talking about the cost of these things, we also have things that are much larger cost and require a bigger bucket. And, but if we can't maintain the current service levels and even increase staffing. I see the increased staffing and maintaining as two different things. Maintaining is what I feel like we absolutely have to do and increasing would be a really, really nice to do. I mean, there's, there's definitely benefits to increasing staffing level. But if you can't maintain the existing staffing level, then you're, you're not increasing anything. So.
Well, one interesting thing about the maintain current service levels is that the future deficits that are projected are a bit unknown, right? We do our best guesswork on cost trends, on, you know, labor, labor cost trends, on cost of materials trends, on tax revenues. And it looks not great. It always looks not great. As we've always said, somehow we always land the plane, but we're always worried about it and it's always close. We're always close to not meeting our reserves and then four years from now, it looks like we may not be able to do that. So I keep thinking like, So, I keep thinking like, the, the increase and the maintain are different but connected because if the worst-case scenarios don't come true, perhaps if there's a revenue source that's buffering us a little bit, perhaps that could be used for some strategic staffing increases if it's not needed to maintain, if that, if that makes sense. I think it's two different storylines and it's two different facts, but it's, it would be nice for us to put the worry about the future deficit behind us so that we could think about where do we go from there.
Well, why don't, while we have this list up here, Sasha and I are going to shift this to the back, because I do think we might need to reorganize our projects a little bit, but while we're doing that, I know there's examples from other communities, we talked about this, that this is not, the things that you were talking about are not out of the realm of possibility, this has happened in other places, and I thought maybe staff could allude to a few examples while we shift this paper and get a new sheet up to refine our ideas and start our, our refinement of prioritization. So, you guys want to share some of the examples that are milling around in the metro?
Yeah, we, I think between us, we have a variety of things that we know about that communities do. Captain Rollins has been thinking about the city of Tigard, how they created a, a renewing levy for police services. We're aware that the city of Milwaukee, I believe, just recently adopted a fee for public safety.
Public safety fee, yes.
So those are two examples, I don't know if you want to add anything in there?
But just, I mean, some of the background on the information that I got while I spoke with the chief of police of Tigard was just, I was, I was eager to kind of hear from him some of the lessons that that city learned going through a levy process, similar to the, the conversations that we're having right now. And I think the biggest one that jumped out to me is he expressed that when the city initially put forth an operating levy, they had a lot of stuff in that levy. He described it as everything and the kitchen sink was kind of in there, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, and the levy, it failed. And the city came back after some polling, what they realized is that there are some things that poll better in the community than others. There are things that people are willing to pay increased property taxes for and some things that they feel that they are just not willing to pay extra for. And so they came back and very narrowly focused the next levy that they put forward, and it was literally a police services levy only, and it passed. And then when they came back to do, that was in 2020, when they came back to do the renewal in 2024, they did, they asked for a straight renewal, they asked for it a year early, they called it a public, a public safety levy at this point, and it passed again with a 78%, which is, that's very high. And so I think the lesson that Tiger took out from that and what Chief McDonald expressed to me was that you, you have to be very intentional and very aware what extra services or what services your community members are willing to pay extra money for, and then once you can secure that funding, is then the city figures out how to be creative with that additional help in order to do other things within the city and focus on other city priorities that may not be as popular when it comes to operating levies or things like that. And then certainly on the, on the public face, the public safety fee side of things, yeah, we know that Milwaukee just passed theirs, I believe it was in August, and I was, when I saw kind of the printout, I think the, the biggest lesson, the biggest takeaway that I took from their messaging is you need to be very, very concrete in what the, what the community is going to receive for that public safety fee. I think the worst thing you can do is be ambiguous about that or be a little murky as far as what am I getting for this extra fee? So they were very specific and outlined each position, position by position, and they branched out a little bit, they actually used some of it, because it was public safety, they had some extra funding going towards BHU, which is a huge need in that city. They also had another position, I don't remember off the top of my head, that was a little bit outside the realm of just police, but it focused on police mainly, but it was just very specific in the actual positions and the actual services that the community could expect to receive, increased over what they were receiving now from the fee. And I think that, those are the two big takeaways, is very, is, is focused and responsive to what the community is willing to pay for, and then very concrete about what the community can expect to receive for any increase in either a fee or, or a tax or something like that.
Other examples?
Milwaukee also had a safe program fee, safe access for everyone, which was geared towards sidewalk infill.
Something that I see every, every few years is with Happy Valley, and that's, they, they basically fund their entire police department off of an, an operating levy, and it just goes to show kind of how the, the fact that our tax rate that we can collect is, was frozen back in the 90s, so different cities respond in different ways, and one way that Happy Valley doesn't have as, as budget issues with police department is they basically every five years have a levy that says, do you want to have police services in the city? And then it passes overwhelmingly, so then the police department gets funded that way. It's interesting.
But we have to remember history, West Lynn used to fund police with a five-year renewable levy, and when it didn't pass, then they had to fund police out of the general fund.
I think it's really important to look at history, and even, I was looking up Tiger just a few minutes ago in response to Otis bringing that up, and their, their levy failed in 2018, so that's a thing to look at.
Yeah.
To study what worked and what didn't work and make sure we don't make the same kind of mistakes or assumptions.
Yeah, I think a couple of things that you all have pointed out, just about being really specific, one of the other examples, I used to work in Tuolatin, and so they had, these examples are, are fresh, fresh for me, but they heard for years about transportation, like neighborhood transportation deficits and things that people, people of the community really cared deeply about and have been asking for, for a long time, and so they did a very focused transportation bond, but there was a lot of education, thinking about from a process, community engagement perspective, leading up to that, and then after it as well. It was, you talked about community trust being a real strength, after the measure was passed and they did, they started doing the transportation improvements, there was a ton of storytelling and like a lot of celebration around the projects that were completed and unveiled, and, and then that allowed them, I think, to build enough trust that then, most recently, they went out for, they did a parks and recreation master plan and then were successful, again, a very specific ask and a lot of storytelling at the forefront and on the back end of these park improvements that they're now funding with the most recent bond, so, and, and there, they also had a story of failure way back then, and it was, they had gone out for parks and it was, it was everything in the kitchen sink and that failed, I can't, I can't remember what year that failed, but it was in the, somewhere in the last 20 years for sure, so. So lots of, there's lots of good stories out there, but I, I do think the focused ask and, and being really specific and the storytelling that, that comes in the beginning of the process and throughout and definitely at the end of what voters are getting, the value is really important. Any other examples you guys want to highlight?
Well, this isn't a city, but there's an example happening right now of the school district and their bond measure, and I'm seeing a lot of public comments about it. So, learning from that, it relates directly to our own constituents to some degree.
Okay. All right, so some lessons, lessons learned and things to consider as we think about how you guys want to fund these priorities. So as last we were talking and the opportunities, you were saying, well, are these in the right groups? We've talked about them in different ways, and I'm just wondering if we need to refine some of our options? Yes? Okay. Yep, use your microphone and let's hear what they are. Thanks.
You guys can't read my mind. Yeah, so I, I boiled all of those down into three different categories that I think covers all of them and adequately describes the way we all think about them.
Okay.
So, the, the first one is maintain stabilized budget, be able to continue providing all those services with a, an eye towards prioritizing preserving staff positions, all of them at all costs. That's just kind of the, the most important reason we're here.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
The second one is adding staff positions and also, of course, including whatever we need to for retention and keeping people happy and around, but all of those positions with public safety, parks, et cetera. So, more people, basically. And then the third one is broad, but it really does all fit together, and that's kind of land, facilities and infrastructure. So, that includes things like Oppenlander, Phase 1 of the rec center, maybe doing something with the Bolden Station, maybe something with the Willamette Falls Drive property that we've discussed obtaining from a developer. I've put in there pedestrian and safety improvements, water system maintenance, and of course, these things don't all have to be funded by the same source, but I just view them as part of this bucket. That also includes projects like waterfront development, if we, if we get opportunities for that. It allows for shifting the cost of the public works facility, so we can free up that general fund money, because that's, that's a facility, so fits in there. And then also just like emergency disaster preparation and those sorts of.
So can I ask, these would be three things that you would go out to the voters for?
Those would be the three priorities of, three categories of priorities, I guess I would call them, that's how I split them up, we have, we need to stabilize, we need more people, and then we need more things and to take care of the things we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think clearly maintain and stabilize the staff levels, adding staff are of interest to the council and to the staff, but I think that's a very tough one to sell to the general public as a goal. On the other hand, I think there's one specific project, which I think land, facilities, infrastructure talks about, yes, that's something, although I think we have to get a lot more specific, can be sold, but there's one more category, which is basically service levels, for example, police services or park services, and that can be sold to the public if we're specific.
So under, is that under 15 and stabilized?
That's where I'd put it.
Parks services and.
Well, I, I want to distinguish between sort of our internal goals and what can be sold to the public, because I think the first two are basically internal goals. I'm not saying we don't do them, but I think they have to be sold in a different way.
Yeah, what are thoughts on these three broad categories? Is that, is it specific enough to the voters?
I mean, I think service levels are a fourth category.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I guess I looked at what is the cost of, like, what is that expense? What does service level mean as an expense? And I guess I, I view that as cost of staff mainly being the biggest expense, and so.
It is, I think there is connectivity, I think you're getting to a refinement of what would the public, how would the public understand that? And if you're just saying maintain and stabilize, that is what you're doing, but that's not specific enough, and that, and that might not be something voters would support, but they are, but you're saying, and we talked about this as a strength, like people, there's a real sense of community pride around your green spaces and like the, the parks that you have here, they're well-loved, being just down the street, and like I said, we do, I come down to West Lynn all the ti, I, I love the parks in West Lynn, so we're, we're park users. But, so I think people, they're, they're well-loved, and then public safety is something that resonates with people, people don't want to see, they don't want to be unsafe. Safety is a, is a primary concern, I think, across the metro, and it's, it's important for quality of life. So, and you're, and I, what I'm hearing you say is that that's, that's what the voters would understand.
Yes.
But it does, it does tie into this.
Of course, but I'm just saying that's kind of a fourth.
It's its own thing. Yeah.
I, I see service levels and staffing as similar, I mean, maybe they're not the exact same thing, but like, if we want to make our community safer and, and by doing something like adding an extra community service officer to enforce the nuisance code and maybe adding a police type stuff, like that's kind of the same, it's, maybe there's a way to patent, to talk about it in a way that where you're talking about like the service levels, but it's kind of also adding staffing, kind of the same thing. I just wanted to add, one other example that I found just looking online was the Salem, a city of Salem, in 2025 had a levy that passed for library and parks, parks programming, parks maintenance and things like that, so that's another thing to look at.
So I think this is, this is where the tension's coming, is we don't want to, we don't want, we, we want to be broad because we want to get all of these funded, but then what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you say in the lessons learned is that it's really important to be specific, and so there's this little bit of tension of we need, if we're going to walk out of here with some priorities, I think we need to pitch them in a way that are maybe specific enough, or it, does the council really want to try to pitch something broad? Because I, if we think back to our threats over here, the threat is, is that it would fail, and then you would have to wait years to be able to go back out, because that, even in these examples, that's what happened. If they didn't get it right the first time, these cities have had to go back out and you have to wait anywhere from three to five years. Sometimes you can go back out sooner, but that seems to be kind of a trend.
The big question that I have, and other folks can jump in, it's like, how do we, and maybe you have some thoughts, how do we talk to the community about what they support and get some, get some data on that? Like, we've done a survey for one particular project recently, but like, when you're talking about parks, staff, library staff, you know, all the different policing, how do you kind of find out and test the levels of support so that when you go out to ask the community for something that's really important to the city for stabilization, adding, you know, some key positions, how do you know what they, what people want? I mean, you can go off your head and say, okay, well, you know, do you know what I'm saying? How do you get that data?
Well, I think it starts in here with prioritizing what, or what's the council's highest priority and being somewhat specific about it, because when you, because then the next step would be to do some community polling around that and to do some engagement around it, to figure out what the right level, how much funding do we ask for? What would people support? But you can't, what you can't do polling on, I don't know if staff correct me, if you have, or, you know, add to this, if you have different opinions, but you can't poll on everything, and I don't mean to pick on this idea for a second, but since you threw it out there and there's a lot of stuff in there. If you were to poll on land acquisition, facilities and infrastructure as one bucket, it's too, it would be too broad, you wouldn't get enough meaningful data to figure out how to, how to package something that you think the public would support. Now, if you're going to get, and even this maintain and stabilize for services would be a little broad, but if you're polling about park service, park services and like police services and what people would support there, that's something, it's a little easier to poll on something like that. Staff, would you add anything to, any additional contacts that are, that you've seen in your professional experience?
No, I, I mean, I, I agree with that, the more specifically we can make the question, the more useful the feedback is. We've done some general level polling before and it's tough to interpret sometimes. Sometimes I feel like there's a, there's a category of things that is just like our obligation to do and to identify what the things, how the, how you would get those done. So like the maintain and stabilize, I feel like that's sort of the obligation of all of us in this room to actually just provide it and to provide some leadership on how we're going to do that. I always talk about it in public, I always talk about it as services, not about staff, it's like, what are the things that you're getting, not what are the people that we're hiring, although there is a person face to it, I think that's important in communication, but if we could figure out like the maintain and stabilize, maybe that has a little bit of enhance and maybe we identify that there's, you know, there is, for example, we could create a public safety fee and we could up the parks maintenance fee a little bit and do a couple of things like that in order to have a feeling like we're confident that we can maintain what we've got, then maybe we could move on to the other categories, break them up just a little bit, so you've got services. So you've got services on one side, and you've got, you know, projects and facilities on one side, right? And if you could identify a couple of those facilities that we wanted to prioritize, those are the things that might even be easier to test with the community.
Yeah.
If we just sort of assume that we need to do the basic stuff and make a, make an action plan for that, I think that would be fantastic.
Yeah, so I agree with that, and I also was thinking just about the reaction of individuals, whether it's a poll or actually voting on something. These general categories of maintain and stabilize and add staff positions are, as you're, you're saying, John, organizational management. And unless it's a specific ask, like Captain Rollins brought up, the Tiger Police and saying, do you want, or was it Happy Valley? You know, it's just a specific question, do you want public safety? And that's, although that might be also organizational management, that's a specific tangible and relatable question to ask people. There, it's easy for them to respond to that.
Right.
So, for instance, if we were saying, like, we kind of projected in our little idea that we were pitching adding a CSO and a ranger if we bought the marina down, you know, that's tangible. So and people could say, oh, I get to use that marina and it'll be safe because, and regulated because there's going to be staff. But if we're just saying general buckets, I don't think we can cover that.
Okay.
In successfully.
I think we're kind of back to, these are, these are outcomes, like maintaining and stabilizing is an outcome, adding staffing positions is something that's kind of interconnected to service levels, but I'm getting that, it's a more specific ask.
I think I might have confused everyone with what I was doing there, which was simply just reorganizing them into categories. We can definitely get more specific, but I view those as just the three different types of things we're doing.
Yeah.
And then underneath those three different things are different items that we can explore. But there are certain things I don't, I don't think we even need to ask the public about because we know, and it's been very clear that they elected us and trust us to make some of these decisions and tell them what we need. So I don't, I don't think we need to ask them too much about whether they they want another community services officer. Of course they do. Everyone is talking about that all the time. It's, it's some of the other projects that I think we we need feedback on. We got some responses to the Oppenlander survey this week. I think a lot of us were surprised at the amount of people willing to support a bond if that were necessary. So it's things like that, more specifically, that we don't know. We couldn't accurately hazard a guess at.
Okay.
So I believe that we do have to ask people because even if they 100% agree with us, they want to be asked about their level of agreement and their, and their level of support. And if we don't ask them and move forward with something, I think that's an opportunity for failure.
Well, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do engagement on it or explain it, simply that if we're doing polling, we don't necessarily need to get into every single position and every single nuance of the things we're asking. But absolutely, we need to be doing what we've, we've shown a commitment to and a strong value of, which is the community engagement on on things we're doing.
Well, and I really like the way John put it, that we're asking people what level of service they want, and then getting that feedback, we can say, with that level of service, we maybe should hire a, a code enforcement and a park ranger. We don't have to say that's exactly what we're going to do. We would say we're going to enhance services in our parks and in the police department. Then, once we have that, then we can decide specifically.
This is an important point. I'd like to hear from others on this, like, do we, do we need to engage or do we know? I mean, that's a, it really influences the work we're doing here and how you engage on it.
Well, I, I think the engagement is the key piece. I mean, because at the end of the day, these are our taxpayers, or the, or the public is funding what we're, what we're doing and what.
Just to clarify, so you don't know, and we do need to engage.
Well, there are certain things that I, we feel, we're in City Hall, we feel that, you know, and we, we kind of, I think you can say that, like, we know that people would probably support a community service officer addition. We know that people support public safety, so they probably would be concerned about response times going up and want to support that. You know, we know, but at the same time, like, that's very general, and so when you start talking about what they would, what willingness to pay is and what, where the community support lies for the different staffing priorities and things like, that's where it's like, I would like to have some engagement with the community on it, just if, to inform them about what's going on and allow them to weigh in, even though we do feel like in City Hall, we, we know where the needs are, and we also have a duty to protect against potential cuts because we don't have staffing to cut at the city.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Anything else you wanted to add to this? Anything you want to add? Okay.
Yeah, and if we're, if we're trying to figure out what people support, we can lean into our, our strong culture of community engagement and hold forums, open houses, meetings, live streams, all sorts of things to engage people.
Yeah.
And I think we can build a really strong consensus from that and also be able to talk about a large, a large number of different options in that process.
I think that's what I'm trying to understand, is you, I understand that you guys have, the community engagement part seems to be the simpler part of this equation. It's the what are you engaging on and what are the priorities? I think that's where, that's where I've heard it's been stuck thus far, and that's where we're trying to get unstuck, is are we engaging on this whole list of options? Because that, that could be, that could be tough. Or are we, are we prioritizing? I mean, one of our goals here was to maybe prioritize these things, and then, and that is what we would engage on, the top priorities.
I, I definitely think, like, agreeing with what John said earlier, just about talking about service levels, I think that's a, an understandable thing for folks to be able to weigh on. Like, if we ask people, do you need, do you feel that we need X staff position? They may not be able to say, but if we talk about it in terms of, you know, different functions that we do as a city and their thoughts on that, that could be a way to do it. And I, you know, we've also talked as a city council about the staffing issues, and then there's been some focus on a couple of parks projects. So in my mind, I've seen, like, the potential to talk about the, the level, service issue, service levels and a parks kind of potential fund package. But that's just only been my thoughts, I'm just putting that out there for everybody to weigh on, and I appreciate everybody sharing their perspective, and I think John had his hand up.
John?
Well, I'd like to propose, there's a couple of ways to think about this for me. What I think about is that the big, I mean, we can talk about, you know, allowing marijuana and getting a little bit of money from marijuana tax, we can talk about getting a little bit more money from Airbnbs, but really, the ways that communities generate significant amounts of money in order to do things that the community notices are fees, levies, and bonds, right? And so I wonder if we could, as a group, think about, like, are we interested in exploring all three of those, two of those, one of those? If it's all three, is it a sequence? I think it would be, what I would love to see and would love to be part of is like a, like a Westland Financial Stability and Community Enhancement Strategic Plan, right? And so what we're, what we're all agreeing is that in 2026, we're going to stabilize our existing services using fees that every property pays, for example. And then we are going to look at how we would add amenities to the community, possibly through levies and bonds. The levy could be a renewing levy for a particular kind of enhanced staffing. The bonds could be adding amenities for projects, it could be buying property on the riverfront, it could be, you know, and then we use the other two pieces, sure that we have the staffing to service those, those fun new things. But I think if the, I think if the community could see a plan out of this group where we, we say in 2020, again, in 2026, we're going to stabilize these things, that you continue to receive great police services and that your parks are mowed, and that we're shelving books and providing materials and all of those things that the city does, and then we're able to, maybe even at the same time, start exploring some bigger picture ideas for the future of the community, but giving the community and all of us on staff the confidence that we can actually staff those things that we're proposing to add in.
Yeah, they're big ideas.
Yeah, so I, I just think of it as like a plan, and if I was, oh, I am a community member who's going to vote on things. I would love to see the whole plan rather than be sort of shown a little piece of it at a time, and, oh, there's another thing, and, oh, there's another thing. Like, let's, let's give them the plan, so that we look like we, we know what we're doing.
And so far in the plan, we're hearing service levels as something that we, that we would want to consider.
I certainly agree with the idea that we need to have a comprehensive plan and show it to the public, but in terms of going out for specific levies, fees, and bonds, I think we have to do that on more or less a project or specific service level, and not try to package everything at once.
I hope that didn't come across as package everything at once. I think a timeline where we do, our, you know, council's ability to gather community feedback, advocate for things, talk to the community about more than one thing at a time is hard, there's only five of you, you know, so it's hard. So I do think making that plan, the timeline plan, I think would be really, really important and helpful, and you've had your hand up a long time.
Yeah. Here's what I would propose. We create a plan based on all of the things we've talked about, and we hold a open house where people can come in and learn about it, maybe even in this room, and just go around in a circle with each of these things with information about each of those items, and then we hold kind of a Q and A where people can come and ask council questions, and we can have a conversation for 90 minutes or something. And then we also have an online engagement component where maybe there's a live stream or some sort of broad survey, and we take all of the feedback from that and refine it further, and then we can look more at the, what's left, funnel it into that, and go back out based on that.
The results of this would translate into some.
The results of this would translate into some polling.
Yeah, so if we're stuck here, and this is where we have been stuck, we take these and we hold these events, and then based on that event, or based on the results of that, we are hopefully unstuck at that point.
Okay.
I don't want us to lose the idea that the city manager just said about sequencing some of these asks.
Yeah, so this is a huge plan.
I, I agree. I think that the outcome of this meeting or perhaps continuation of this discussion is really developing that strategic financial plan based on city needs and having something cognizable to go talk to the community about is, and allow them to weigh in on, on that so that there's some feeling of buy-in on the, on the community's part.
I would add that at no point yet have we asked the community, like, hey, what are we missing? What, what would you like to see that we're not providing? So we haven't had an opportunity to maybe hear that there's something that we haven't considered. I hear a lot about people being very concerned about disasters and emergency, for instance. We haven't talked about that. I'm not saying that that ends up being something, but I, I suggest that there are things we haven't realized or considered that are very popular with people that we don't know about and aren't talking about. So it'd be worth having an open-ended opportunity for the community to weigh in before we proceed.
Okay.
Is there any community, recent community survey data? More project specific.
There, the, we just did a survey in the last two weeks on the Oppenlander property, specifically, more than that, we're looking at a couple of years old. We did some real general polling about some capital things. We have a, we have a Polco National League of, NCS poll about community satisfaction that's almost three years old now. So we do have some of that, but we don't have a great, we don't have a great ongoing supply of polling.
Okay.
And I have had an idea of the two-question survey, something that's very simple for people to answer, and it can be about any topic, and it could be sent out with the weekly email communication, or it could be a link with a QR code on the utility bill or just on the city website. There's a lot of ways that you could get it out there, but it's just two questions, and then we can start, you know, we can ask questions about, do you use City of Westland parks, you know? Have you engaged with any of the things that are being planned? Or it could be things like, do you think we have sufficient policing for people speeding or breaking traffic laws? I mean, there's a whole lot of things like that that you can ask about that would then like narrow down or, or get some feedback from the community as to what they're expecting, and then you could also have questions that would lead us to what they would be willing to pay for if they're not getting what they expect.
Yeah, an alternate approach might be some sort of survey that really electronically models our little process of putting dots on projects and services, and let the public, basically, each, each respondent has three votes, or three virtual dots, and puts them against a list of projects and services.
Yeah, I've, I've liked that idea, and actually, a digital take on it that I had was modifying, like, a Shopify store or something like that to create an online survey experience kind of, where people can go through a list of the things we're considering and learn all about them and add them to a cart, so to speak, kind of repurpose maybe even the reviews section to get, to get feedback individually on them. But basically, it provides a menu of the things we're considering and allows people to then show which ones they support.
Do you mind if I hop in? Could I hop into this conversation just briefly? Yeah, hi, Danielle Choi, Community Relations Coordinator. I just wanted to say that I really appreciate this conversation about communications and the importance of it, you know? This is historically the most difficult time to understand, for governments and the public to understand each other over, I'd say, the last 50 years. We're in an epistemological crisis, there's an information crisis, you know, folks are, there's alternative facts abound, it's, it's just a really hard time to have any kind of conversation, let alone difficult conversations about, you know, to get an appropriate understanding of what true priorities, you know, our public care about. And I just wanted to point out that nine out of the 19 threats on that board are communications-related issues, but we have two full-time communication staff. So while these surveys and the polls and all this wonderful engagement, you know, are things that I think we can and must pursue, we do have resource limitations as far as the kind of proactive communication that's being asked for or would be required in order to get good data and have those effective conversations. You know, we spend a lot of our time doing reactive communications. There's a question that comes in, there's a problem, something happens, and we end up kind of chasing our tails, trying to, you know, address something rather than getting out ahead, having, you know, years-long public information campaigns where you can make sure the public has understanding before an issue comes up so that they can, you know, then prioritize and decide and answer the questions we ask of them. So I just wanted to thank you for having this conversation, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so some of the communication strategies you're talking about is probably above, and it will require additional resources, above and beyond what's, what the mighty, small but mighty communications team is already handling.
And, and to that point, let's say we do my little two-question survey, somebody has to look at that data and figure out what, what it's saying, so.
Yes, with any of these things, somebody would have to do some data analysis, yeah, putting together an open house. People think open houses are great and easy, but there is a lot of, a lot of work that comes into putting it together and then getting people to actually show up and get meaningful. to actually show up and get meaningful input. So.
Yeah, they're only as robust as the information we can source from people and we can't make people come.
Yeah, I, all of these things are, require resources.
Just going off of that, I mean, did I, were you done, Mary? Oh, I mean, we have this amazing newsletter that goes out. I'm, I'm thinking more about the one that goes to every single household in Westland. But we were able to do that in a really, really cost-effective way. So I don't know if we could leverage that, some sort of tool that goes out to the everybody to kind of get some feedback.
Well, I think, I think all of these are good ideas. And I think you would want to utilize all of your tools that are at your disposal. I don't think there's one of these tools that's better than the other. They're going to capture different audiences. I think what I'm hearing from this group is that based on the list we generate it back there and kind of our sticking point when we start trying to talk about it here about what are the priorities, I'm getting a sense that you're not ready to express your priorities yet. You want some preliminary data that does not involve polling. We're not ready, like in order to ever get to the polling step to figure out what you would put on, go out for a levy, a bond or a fee, that you want to first have some preliminary community data. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Am I hearing that? This is a question for council. I just, I'm seeing, I'm seeing a trend, but I want to, I need you guys to confirm that that's, that's true. You want more data before you're ready to fully express priorities.
I think so far we've seen polling data on specific projects, but we haven't seen comparison of projects or comparisons of surveys, of services.
Megan?
This might be food for thought, but I was just thinking when I was reading this, maybe this might tie, I hope it ties in. Like we have a parks master plan that's already been vetted, that guides what the priorities were currently at the time. It already has our service levels. It has that expectation from 2019. That's, but is that where you start? I was trying to think of other departments with some of our deficiencies and service levels. We have some data that we've already approved. How do you start with that? And then when you start looking at the other wants, is that where you go for the community questionnaires? Like how do you, we've already got these documents. How do we use them to move things forward that were already approved?
Yeah.
So it's maybe just a big balloon question.
No, it is. That's an important consideration. All of the projects that you do typically come with a significant public engagement component to it. So you have, so yeah, in a lot of places, data does exist. But what, so here's, this is, I think, where councils can sometimes, it, it can be, it's hard. You're making a big ask. You're having, you're asking the community to have a difficult conversation. And so do you rely on the community engagement data? Maybe that already exists as part of some of these planning efforts? Or are we going out and asking for more?
I feel like we have a leadership role in like telling the story and as, as a whole city staff and city council, like what are our needs and, you know, what, what do we, what do we need to fund? And what I'm struggling to think about in my head is, you know, the difference between the fee and levies and, and a levy and a, and a bond measure from the standpoint of the fee is adopted by the city council, the levy and bond has to go out to the voters. So how do you determine which one of these sources to use is what I'm, what I'm trying to, and like what goes into which bucket? I mean, I personally, I think of like taking care of what we, of our, maintaining our current staffing levels is the key critical thing that comes out of this. And how do you do that? I mean, is it a fee or a levy, you know, type of thing? So.
Can we talk about some of the funding sources for a moment?
Yeah.
Can staff just give us a rundown?
Yeah, we can, for sure.
That you have the resource.
We're, we're happy to do this. I just made this as I was thinking about it. So I, I have services, basic infrastructure and amenities. And so we can debate about what's an amenity and what's a basic infrastructure. But if you think about it, the most common way that communities fund services is fees, charges or renewing levies. Right? So those are the tools you have available there. For basic infrastructure, utility fees generally or bonds to build stuff, you know, obviously federal grants and state grants and, you know, but the things that we control. And then on the amenities, grants and bonds. So as I was saying a few minutes ago, my thought is like build a balanced approach that uses the different things for the things that they are good at. And I, I do feel like there's, again, I think there's a ton of credibility in this room. I think you all, the five of you have incredible credibility in this community. I think our department heads do as well. I think we're well positioned to tell the story that we need to do some work to just, to just maintain what we've got, maybe do some of those little enhancements that the community's looking for on the staff side. And I, I see that as, I see that as, why wouldn't we try, why wouldn't we try feeding fees for that first? Because that's a basic element that every single person in the community wants is parks maintenance and traffic safety and SROs and make sure we have enough patrol overnights that we all feel safe in our homes. Right? And, and I kind of think like, I, I guess the question, Sarah, that you were asking is one that I really want to know is how. A $20, a $20 a month public safety fee, Lauren?
Probably going in about?
About $2 million a year. $20 a month public safety fee. You could stabilize and enhance police funding with a public safety fee. And that could be phase one. You could do that in, in, by July of next year. And then you could be talking about, you know, let's make sure that we're taking care of our basic infrastructure. And you could start assembling a bond package maybe for a few amenities that you think the community would really like to see if we had a couple of fee pieces in place. And I think, I kind of think we could just propose that. What I'm hearing from you folks is that you feel like the community understands what the needs are, understands what they want, and that you could use some of your political capital to advocate for those in a way that maybe it wouldn't even be all that controversial. I mean, when I looked at that Milwaukee Public Safety Fee, I was Googling like, who fought this? Who opposed it? They kind of just adopted it. And there were a couple of folks out there. There was some chatter on Facebook, but it kind of didn't go anywhere. It seems to me they kind of just adopted it. And I'm not saying, I'm not at all, if anyone's watching, I'm not advocating doing things in the middle of the night or anything. Like we would do it openly and publicly, but you would use your, you would use your credibility in this community to do that piece, which would free you up to be able to talk about. Then staff could take some of our sticky dots off of the things that we're really super concerned about. And we could put, help you put them on the other things that you really want to do. That's why you got elected to, to the council. And I think we could, I think we could assemble a plan like that. We would all have to use our credibility. So Rollins and Mahuna would have to go out and really, really publicly explain, how do we, what are these, what are these 30 office, what are these 30 police personnel that we have do? Right? What do they do all the time? And what do, what do our park maintenance workers do? Right? We, there'd have to be some really smart communication about all those things. But I think it's, I think with the, the experience and the leadership and the credibility you have in this room, I think you could do some of those basic things pretty efficiently and then move on to the things that we all really want to see.
Maybe here's a question for staff. What would, what direction would staff need to at least draft kind of this strategic plan and to shape this up for the council? Maybe to give them something to react to? What, what direction do you need?
Well, we need, we need to hear what you think is important. We, we, we think that parks maintenance and some of the, you've heard us talk about some of the pieces that we think we're struggling to provide. I think we would need to hear you say, yeah, I, I think parks maintenance is my number one, or patrol and traffic safety and community service officers is my number one, or these, these six things are my number one that, how could we put them together? So some direction on the, on the pieces. I never envisioned this morning that we would get into how many patrol officers and how many CSOs and how many park rangers, but just like the bucket of things. Cause we know the cost of that. Lauren's got a, oh, look, Lauren's got a spreadsheet up. I'm shocked. But we, we can get you those, we can get you those pieces. But I think we also want to hear like, if that's not where you want to go, we need to know that. We, we exist to do what the council wants to do. And so I'm, I'm always leery of pushing too hard. Right? So I want to know.
Can I just make one comment? Did I, were you finished? Just to preface this whole discussion that the city council has, I, what I really struggle with, I gotta be honest, is when we start talking about one particular department or one particular, you know, like library or, or police or parks or, every department we have is important. And so, and you know, certain things may like come, you know, sell better with the community or are more, you know, more tangible. But I just want to, I really struggle with like saying, oh, you know, we should do parks or police or, or library or IT or, just because every single department's important. So I hope that every, as we kind of get into the difficult aspect of communicating about what we support, that everybody keeps that frame of mind, that we have a very difficult job to do on this, but also just we support everybody as, as a city organization.
And I think that part of this, if we have a public safety fee that goes out with everybody's utility bill, that the amount of revenue that comes from, from that would go to say the police department. However, that could ease some of the need of the general fund. So, so we get $2 million. We don't reduce, we don't take $2 million of general fund away because we're trying to enhance, but we can take a few hundred thousand that doesn't have to be funded from the general fund that can then fund other things, other departments throughout the city.
Yeah, it's, think about it like a pressure cooker. You're releasing a little pressure.
So what I think would be helpful from staff and is already partially done, we have that, that memo with the list of position and salaries attached to them. But it would be useful if we could see the cost of what stabilizing, we have a range, I guess, of, of what the, the stabilization could mean, but to also bring things up to the expected level of service. What is the cost in that? What is the cost of the deferred maintenance on facilities and parks? What would we, what would be the cost of phase one of, of Parker Road? Just getting a sense of what each of these things we've talked about costs and how we could potentially structure them with, with fees, bonds and levies. I don't, I'm not hearing a lot of disagreement about any of the things we've talked about or that any of us feel like we, we just need to stop talking about that or forget that. So getting all of these in a way that we can kind of view it from costs and move the numbers around and play with them and see where they can go. If we could get that information, we might have a much easier time figuring out what we need to take to the voters.
Okay. So it's really better understanding the cost of the priorities.
And so the, with the fees, we need to communicate that, but that's up to council to approve. And then it would be added to the master fees and charges. As John said, it could be in effect as early as next July 1. So that, but that, again, that's, takes some of our political capital. And I think from what John was saying is we want to share that we've got these different buckets of funding opportunities. These do require voter approval. We're going to initially begin to stabilize and provide funding for the staffing needs that we have with this public safety fee or whatever.
Okay, staff, if you were to take all of this information, we have a list, I'm kind, I'm looking at the list of opportunities back there that we circled. Could you put together a draft plan based on the input that's been shared today and highlight these priorities, what they cost, an estimate of what you think these things cost? And based on how they, like the priorities were expressed by the council, list them in some sort of order of what you think would be the, the right timeline, how you would sequence them, and then attach some potential funding sources to them and bring it back to council to react to. Do you feel like you have enough information to be able to draft something? Or what's, what's missing? It would, going off the dot exercise back there, like we know, we think they're important.
The mayor knows I love answering this question, which is at the end of a council discussion. Do you have what you need? Somewhat. I think it would be the more that we can be specific about the things that we're providing costs for.
Priorities themselves?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's list them out.
Yeah. That, that would be helpful. I don't know. It's.
I mean, we've talked in the past about maintaining service levels, protecting against cuts. And then we've also talked, we saw the dot exercise, a lot of talk about increasing key, key staffing for things like our departments of one, the CSO and different, across the city, there's those things. So what would those, what would the range be of the cost for that so that we can?
Yeah.
Talk about it.
And we have, we have presented council over the summer with information about the cost to stabilize and the cost of some of the staffing needs that we have. We, we put together a list of potential police positions, a potential parks positions, a library outreach. You know, there, there was a list. They, and, and it had some projects, starting just for the services though. On the service side, we, we know that. Easily translate that into, for example, if it was 100% fee or 50% fee or, or whatever. That, that part is easy. If I'm not, if I'm not hearing anything different in terms of which positions you would like to look at, we already have, we already have that. In fact, Lauren can talk about it right now because we could dig it out. It's, it's the, it's the amenities. I think it's the amenities, the projects that are a little harder.
Let's, let's talk about the amenities. So looking back at our list, you guys talked about the, well, there's the Parker Road property, Oppenlander, the community amenity on the waterfront. There's the asset management component to it, which I'm not sure if that's services or amenities. How would you characterize asset management?
That was mine, trying to be able to generate the actual cost for what you're asking right now. Like actually having an evaluation of our buildings and knowing what their longevity is.
So this would be like?
It would be infrastructure. Yeah. And the same thing with parks, speaking specifically of assets of 27 miles of trails and, you know, 15 playgrounds and that kind of the, the hard goods we have in those areas. And there are long-range planning for replacement and maintenance.
Okay. So the asset management.
And.
Like a specific project that we would look at, like how much does it cost to do a plan like that?
And I'm imagining there isn't just one number for a specific plan, but there are levels of the plan that are more or less ambitious.
Yeah, you would, you would hire a consultant that would do it as just straight evaluation of what you have based on standards. And then it would be given to us as a long-term plan of what we would be able to fund and maintain long-term.
Okay.
Okay. What are, what are the amenities? That's the, amenities would be like bike and pedestrian safety or is that infrastructure?
I think.
I feel like amenities are.
Structure. Okay. Waterfront. And the halls. Oppenlanders. And what was the last one?
Parker Road.
Parker Road, thank you. Any amenities that we're missing up here?
I know this one can feel a little ancillary, but we should be keeping an eye on the Bolton Fire Station and looking at how we're going to fund doing something with that at some point. So I would like to see a cost, even if it's not something we ultimately end up pursuing right now.
I would not necessarily put the Bolton Fire Station. I would put, what are we going to do with that location? But I think just land acquisition in general, especially as it relates to the waterfront vision and the Vision 43.
So the land acquisition would fall under the category of amenities?
Yeah. And I see a heavy relation to the tax increment financing districts with land. land acquisition. And I do think with the list that you have up there, we have a good kind of, there's some timeline prioritization that can easily be done. I mean, some of those are longer term amenities, and some of those are more shorter term.
Okay, so infrastructure, the other ones we're missing, infrastructure, we have the utilities, right?
Water system.
Do you want me to list this out separately? Utilities or water system, water and sewer? Utilities? Are there, are there, is there other infrastructure that we had up there that we're missing?
I think just to have roads, road conditions is important.
Okay, just roads, city roads?
It's kind of infrastructure related, but people do complain about the condition of our roads. Yeah.
For amenities, do we need to add the operations building too?
I was going to ask about that one. Is that infrastructure or is it an amenity?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure? Does anybody disagree with the fact that it's infrastructure?
I think it might be amenities, but.
Or amenities. Now it's all three.
It is.
Where, where do we want it to, where are we going to list it?
It's a capital asset.
Yeah, I, I think.
What are we, operations facility? It also probably has different funding opportunities, given what it houses, yes?
Yep.
Okay. Are we missing anything?
Well, under services, yeah. I think we should talk about police, parks.
Okay. Again, acknowledging all services are important, but these are the two that we're, we're kind of zeroing in on to help free up, be a significant, it would be a significant amount of money to be able to free up general fund dollars for other things. Yes?
Can I add facilities? And I know parks, which is so, we know it's separate.
I think what would be good under that one is if we could see what the cost is to bring every department up to what they believe their required level of services. Well, to, to Counselor Groner's point, there are different levels of that. So like, good, acceptable, fantastic, you know?
Or in your dreams.
Yeah, or pipe dream, but also nightmare, and then just where we're at now.
Are you thinking every department in the city or just, okay?
It would be interesting to know what each department feels like that incremental gap is between being able to provide ideal and just good. Like, where's the difference there?
Facilities belongs under services because, and not new facilities. We're not talking about this.
No, current maintenance of our existing facilities and not just park-related.
It's a facilities maintenance.
Oh, facilities maintenance, okay. Okay. All right, are we missing anything? Looking back at our other poster, I think we've got all of our, all the things covered. Okay, so our next step then would be basically put together a draft plan for these priorities. Staff will guess at the timeline based that, well, they'll, and make an informed guess at the timeline based on previous discussions you all have had, as well as what they've learned today. They'll identify potential funding sources for each priority and, so that you can be able to assess the, the cost of these things and, and consider how, how they are proposing you sequence it. And then you'll be able to, that will inform how you talk about it with the community and how you engage from there. Some ideas we've captured here are to do an open house, a live stream and a survey, you know, asking the community about what they want, what are the expectation, what their expectations are. We've got, you know, this idea about this list of service options and, you know, adding those things to a shopping cart, once we kind of understand what their costs are. You know, offering up simple, like two-question surveys to start gathering some input that way. And, and then also I listed up here at the council using their political capital to help not encourage people to participate and share their input, but then once you've, you've zeroed in on what, what the ask is, knowing that that will be part of your engagement strategy.
Yeah, I want to get some sense of what the sequencing of some of these levies or bonds could be. I mean, one a year? Is that a reasonable frequency for?
We don't necessarily know what they are yet.
Yeah.
I think it really depends, based off of what's going on with the other taxing jurisdictions, how much each thing is, and if we're like building it on top of other things, because, you know, by the time you get to the third or fourth thing, it's going to get to be a lot. So you, you know, you can say one a year, but then by the time you get to year three or four, that's, you know, that's a lot.
Subject to change, but.
Yeah.
So I think this exercise is kind of helping to understand what that, what staff would give you something to react to. And then council could then, I think that might be easier to be able to provide specific direction on how to engage the community. Yes? Okay. Staff, how are, how are we feeling about this direction? Is this, is this doable to draft something up based, these are the priorities? We'll look at what sources could help fund these things. Do you have any other polling or data from them?
I have a picture in my mind about what I would return with, using my dial of friends over here to help me do it. I do have kind of a picture. I think it, it's going to be general and it's going to, well, I'll propose some things, but we'll need to work on it. It's almost like you need another one of these, once you have a draft thing in mind, in order to really select the things that you want to, that you want to move forward on. Because I would want to do another, I think I would want to do another iteration of this before we went out to the community, so that you, I, I feel like this all needs to come be, feel like and actually be like it's coming from our elected officials, not from staff. So we'll need, we'll need your imprint on it to go to the community with it. My, my plan would be, my plan would be to, yeah, we could take each one of these, we can put some costs on it. We know a lot of the costs. Some of them, some of them are a little generic, but we could put some costs on it. I think we could bring this back reasonably fast, actually. But it'll have some specific proposals. Yeah, I, I think so.
And maybe also tee it up with some specific questions. What's, what is the direction we're looking for from council? Because again, I'm, I'm hearing, like, we don't, maybe we don't want to engage the community on everything, but we want to, we want to select something that we want to engage them on and understand why we're picking this thing based on this broad landscape, maybe? Yes, I'm looking for head nods, like that. Okay.
And, and just looking at the list, like, I don't know, some of those, I think staff knows kind of what the, the key priorities are for the city council to evaluate. For example, I don't think you can put a cost on the waterfront as a, as a, but like you can put a cost on police and parks and facilities and some of the, you know, the parks projects that we've been talking about and a few, a few of the other things. So like, some of the things are a little bit longer term. So I think, and it will come, it does come from the city council. I mean, we created this list for, for the staff to take a look at. We're relying on you all to come, come back with some, kind of the specifics so we can take the lead on moving some, some things forward.
Well, in the, well, just to clarify that one, the waterfront was this phase one amenity on the waterfront, not like a whole waterfront project? Is that, just to, that was what we talked about earlier. I wrote it down on this, this page.
What I was thinking of, since I, I kind of brought that up from what we were presented with last night in our meeting, or rather Monday, no, you know, that was yesterday afternoon. What day is it?
Time flies when your meetings are so much fun.
Right. Well, we haven't met Tuesdays until yesterday was our first Tuesday meeting.
Okay.
We normally meet Mondays. But it's, it can be something as simple as creating a space that will be more welcoming in our newly renovated City Hall building, which is a project that's already done. That project is done, but maybe make a seating area out front that, because it's the public facing and it's very, it's a very public facing building because it's right as you, the road physically turns. So everyone who drives by going across the arch bridge sees Historic City Hall when they're on their way to Oregon City. So making it, making an advertisement for our coming waterfront project that somehow people can, with an I don't know what it would be. But it's really not, that waterfront phase one is, I'm not thinking of this long-term vision of some of the things we've talked about putting there. I'm just talking about something very basic. The person that was describing, it was Jennifer, is that her name? So from the consultant yesterday in the meeting. Did anyone else hear this?
I did. I remember.
Said to kind of help people, bring people along. This is a, this is an area that people don't even think about.
So to clarify for staff, there, when they put a cost estimate on this, it's for this like phase one amenity to just draw, draw some initial interest, not like a whole
Right. I mean, a bench and a bike rack and some signage.
Okay, that's what we're considering? Yes?
Actually, sort of each of these amenities that are on that list are sort of phase ones.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Okay.
In their own little world.
Well, I think the Parker Road property, phase one is a bigger, more expensive project.
Different in scale, but.
In my mind.
Yeah, but one of the things I've heard about Parker Road, for example, is we're not, we're not saying a full recreation center with pool and all of it. Maybe we're talking about a smaller focused multi-use space that's.
Right, but we're talking, we were talking like plaza with a pavilion and something orders of magnitude larger than a bench and a sign.
Definitely.
I'm just making sure staff has the right direction of they're not costing on an entire vision. It's like the first, whatever the first step in the vision would be for these particular amenities.
Right. And I mean, for me personally, what we need to do is get an idea of what the costs that, to run the city that, that are the gap that we're talking about potentially in the different departments for the necessary, you know, meets and hopefully exceeds the expectations of the public. So what's the dollar figure on those items? So that we don't, I know I personally have very high limit on what I can envision, but that's, it's not helpful to go out to the public for some extremely grand position when we, and then say, oh, whoops, I didn't know how much the city needed to dysfunction. So we don't want to be there. So.
Yeah.
But I, that's what I think of, is this would be helpful to learn these numbers so that then we can inform this bond process. But I don't personally want it to be going out for some of these more organizational management functional items that I think the public, they, they prioritize, unless it's something specific like, like police, for instance, is specific and people can think about that and equate it to, yes, I will pay an extra fee for that. If it's just, we, we need more money to run the city, that's not, I don't think that's going to pass.
Yeah, I think that was, I think there was consensus on that. Yes? Yeah. Any, any dissent on that? I, I feel like there's some pretty strong, again, referencing the comment you made earlier. All services are important, but there's consensus on being specific when it comes to service levels, what it pertains to. Okay. All right. So next steps then from here would be to staff assembly, taking all this information and putting it in this draft strategic plan. And then, and then maybe also taking some of the input we heard from your outreach interviews, as well as what you mentioned today, and proposing some options for communication strategies for you to, to, to consider, to keep things moving along. Does that sound good? Anything else you're, you're wanting?
Should we do another one of these workshops after the, you have some time to assemble? I think this was a super helpful format to get everybody talking and everything on the board. And you did a wonderful job facilitating the conversation. So it could be helpful to, I think the next conversation would be a little bit more difficult because it's pinning down the specifics and.
Or easier.
Maybe it's not easy.
I'm not sure. You want to keep working for us, Sarah?
Sure, I would be, I would be happy.
Mouth to the mic, please.
Yeah, I would be happy to support you in whatever your, however this conversation shapes up next. And I can, again, I've had some experience in working with other cities in the metro, and so we're here to support your team in, in assembling this for you and teeing it up with some questions that will help get to some, some of those decision points. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your engagement, your participation. Really good discussion. And the folks in Westland are, are well-served. You have their best interests at heart and a good plan for engaging them along the way. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.